I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
We have one item tonight, which is the Lane County Behavioral Health Update. And Counselor Rodley.
I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest as an employee of the county's more specifically of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Cory. All right, Neil, I think you're introducing the item and then we're going to have.
Yes, so I'd like to introduce and invite up Eve Gray, Lane County's Director of Health and Human Services, and Alicia Beamer. She's the Chief Administrative Officer for Peace Health. Also in the audience is Steve Mokrheyski, the County Administrator and Staff. Tonight, your, the council will receive an overview of the public-private partnership and collaboration that's working towards a vision for Lane County's work on behavioral health. We have, you received a PowerPoint in your packet and we'll put that up right now for you if that works. And I will turn it over to Alicia and Eve. Thank you.
The microphone's not on.
Is that on?
And now, perfect. You passed the first test.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome and thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Beamer, as you shared, I'm the Chief Administrator, Administrative Officer at Peace Health Sacred Heart River Bend. I've been with Peace Health for seventeen years. Prior to that, I worked at Lane Council of Government, where I did adult protective services investigating abuse and neglect for seniors and people with disabilities here in Lane County for that entire time.
And I'm Eve Gray, Director of Health and Human Services for Lane County. I've been in this role for three years, but have worked in healthcare in Lane County since 2011.
Great, well, thank you. Well, we look forward to talking to you tonight about a really exciting opportunity that we are really looking forward to bringing to our community and our neighbors and our loved ones. And so if we can go to the next slide, oh, it's me, sorry. I failed the next test.
That'll give me a chance to ask, ask the question before you get started. Do you want us to hold our questions until you get through or do you want us to pepper you with them throughout the, throughout the presentation?
We're comfortable with both.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Feel free to ask questions as we go along. Thank you. So, thank you. So, just to start out a bit, as you all know, when we closed University District, we made a commitment to this community to ensure that we had an inpatient psychiatric unit that stayed, that we would preserve that service until we could identify another solution. And so as we looked at what is that solution, we looked at what are the needs in the community? And we know that there's a need for adolescent psych, adolescent psychiatric, inpatient psychiatric hospitalization and care in this community. At Riverbend, for example, we board up to four patients a week that are under the age of eighteen for up to a week at a time until they can get care up in Portland for, into an adolescent psychiatric facility. We also know that there is a need for additional adult care, inpatient care for adults. We are sending patients up to Portland for that level of care currently and today. And, and so there's, there's truly a need for both our youth and our adolescents to receive inpatient psychiatric care here in this county. And with that, that looks at really what is, what can we do that's beyond just those thirty-five beds that we have in our current unit that's at University District? That we were able to preserve and keep there at University District when we closed, when we closed the hospital? And so we really are looking at, okay, what is the, the longer-term plan and strategy for that? And, and looking at from a peace health perspective, our vision is to have an inpatient psychiatric hospital that we announced would be a ninety-six-bed inpatient psychiatric hospital in this community to fill that void for the youth and adolescent as well as our adults in need. And that would be a ninety-six-bed hospital that would have twenty-four adult, or twenty-four youth beds as well. And so we announced and we were very excited to announce that we would be pursuing a certificate of need for an inpatient psychiatric hospital for ninety-six beds. And we also looked at what are the needs for the community beyond that and what we evaluated. I'm, I have the pleasure and honor also to sit on the Steering Committee for the Crisis Stabilization Center, for the Lane County Crisis Stabilization Center. And we looked at that, we really looked at what are the crisis services in our community? We know that one in five adults experience a mental illness in their lifetime and one in six adults, or one in six children do. So, we know there's that impact as well. And we also know that about, on average, individuals go for eleven years before they receive treatment for that, their mental illness. And so what, what can we look at from the community from a broader network and service? And as I've had the opportunity to serve on the Crisis Stabilization Center Steering Committee and learning more about that, we've been looking at crisis services. We know that they need to work together and in larger systems to meet that need and that's evidence-based from the nation, for national evidence-based information. As well as when we're looking at, is our current community meeting that need? And some of those, the tests to determine is the need being met. Psychiatric boarding, one of the ways that you know, and to Mayor Van Gordon's test, like, not passing the test would be psychiatric boarding in the emergency department. And just as I shared with you, we're seeing quite a bit of that in our emergency department at Riverbend. And what that does is it impacts the care for the community as a whole because individuals are coming. They're sitting for, as I shared, up to a week at a time, which takes an emergency department bed away from other folks who are coming to our emergency department for care. And for, and most importantly, it means that those individuals are not receiving the right level of care in the right amount of time and they're not getting the treatment that they need in that moment. There's also an over-representation of people with mental illness and substance use disorders in our justice system. And we hear a lot about that from a number of different outlets, but, but we definitely see that. And we see that even in our emergency department where individuals are being brought in to our emergency department from law enforcement because they are interacting with law enforcement because there's no other outlet for them to be served. And then we have folks walking out of our emergency department. And I can say even my own family have come to the emergency department for psychiatric care. And because of the chaotic environment and distress of that environment have walked out because they don't feel that that's a healing environment for them to receive that care. And so that, those, all of those three items would say that we're not passing that test and that we can do better. And as we, from Peace Health, looked at that, really, how could we have a model of care that would include both our ninety-six-bed inpatient psychiatric hospital as well as the Crisis Stabilization Center co-located to ensure that people have seamless transitions of care where they can go to the Crisis Stabilization Center rather than an emergency, emergency department and receive that care there and then if appropriate, be on the same campus and go right over to our inpatient psychiatric hospital. And, and so that's really where the vision came from. I will say that I, I had, I've had the honor and pleasure a number of years ago of serving on the Junction City Transportation System Task Force and the Planning Commission. And I can only imagine like the, the, the work that you all do as far as what are you looking at? Looking out many, many years ahead. And so, you know, even with the Transportation System Task Force, it's very complex and detail-oriented. And we're looking out thirty years in advance on what, what can, can we plan for the community? And from a peace health perspective, that's really also what we're looking at is what, what can this service provide for the community in the years ahead? I will say from a person standpoint, it is getting ahead of that giving, or really providing an opportunity for youth and adolescents and adults to come to the Crisis Stabilization Center and the first time receive the treatment they need instead of eleven years down the road when maybe things have fallen apart where it's too late and they can't get that service or they are interacting multiple times with law enforcement or other devastating events may occur because we didn't get ahead of that. So as we look at, at the planning for the lives that we serve, that is what this plan really will help, help support and start to work on as it gets developed. But also from a healthcare perspective, as we look at it, what is the vision for healthcare? From a peace health and an enterprise perspective, we look at from a behavioral health and inpatient behavioral health care and it does not need to be part of an acute care hospital. We do not currently provide that at University District. It's across the river, seven miles away from Riverbend. It's very successful in, in running as a standalone hospital. And that's really what it will be licensed as, as a standalone hospital, operating on its own as a hospital without needing to be attached to Riverbend. And then with the, the co-location of the Crisis Stabilization Center, again, it will help with that, that throughput and, and support and sustainability of care for these individuals. We also see that behavioral health, although I know I've, I've been asked a number of questions about the viability of behavioral health services right now, especially for inpatient. We've been running our inpatient behavioral health unit since nineteen sixty-nine. We opened it, I may be familiar with it being called the Johnson Unit. Yep. So, and it was very innovative at the time when we opened it. The Sisters of St. Joseph opened it really because it was filling a void and a need during that time. And again, you know, we have been able to sustain it very well over the years and develop, really be very, we, we have, have transformed our services as the acuity and the need has increased. We are, and, and so this model of care really will help us as we continue to transform and mental health services change, hopefully for the better over the course of the next thirty, forty years as we move forward. And that's really that model as well. So that, that's our vision. A long story. I apologize for that, but I'll turn it over to Eve to talk really about the inpatient or the, the Crisis Stabilization Center.
We may have one slide, oh. Thank you. I think we may have one slide on the rehab hospital.
Oh, yes, thank you.
As well.
So this is also, as you all are familiar, we did, we received certificate of need and also zoning for approval for an inpatient rehab facility hospital that's going to be breaking ground here in early next year, in twenty twenty-five. And this, the, the facility that you see that's, that's photographed in this slide is very similar to what you will see for the inpatient psychiatric hospital that we're planning on building where it will again be a standalone hospital that does not need to be attached to Riverbend. But it does provide, and we're really excited that it will be providing innovative, state-of-the-art care for individuals who have experienced a traumatic brain injury, a stroke or, or a cardiac event where they require significant rehab therapy and physical therapy. And it will be one of the first traumatic brain injury units in the state. And we're really excited to be moving ahead, breaking ground and providing this service in our community here in Springfield. So just wanted to share that and also just how it also aligns with our inpatient behavioral health hospital model. Thank you.
Okay, on to the stabilization center. And I'll describe this model in a little more detail because it is a model that is becoming national best practice, but it's newer and not as many folks are familiar with the model for a stabilization center. So the, the levels of care that are within a stabilization center are all levels of care. From the person who ran out of their antidepressant and just needs a medication refill and it's after hours, they can drop in. To an individual who is in behavioral health crisis, this will have secure portions of the facility and be capable of handling every single level of acuity. So the initial intake area for individuals who are walking in. And much like the, the hospital system, the people who walk in are not going to be as sick as the people who are transported in. So the front entrance will be utilized by common, everyday, all of us who sometimes have a day that we're having difficulty getting through or our kids are having a day where they're having trouble getting out of bed because they just, they have been depressed and they just can't take that next step. Or the, the person, the mother who just found out that her son was in a severe car accident and is now in the intensive care unit down the road at Riverbend and doesn't know what that next step is to take. You know, those are the stories of the types of individuals who will utilize the walk-in services that are available within the urgent care setting. It'll be everyone. Now, just as the emergency department has an assessment when people walk in the door, we will have an assessment when people walk in the door and identify if there does happen to be someone who is significantly sicker than the normal person that we would expect to walk into a facility like this, they can be very rapidly treated and moved back to the secure area so that we are getting them treatment and, and assuring that we have discharge planning for them. This is unique compared to the emergency or crisis services that we have today. Today, if an individual is in a behavioral health crisis, their, their option, really, their only option voluntarily is to go to the emergency department where often they are not able to receive definitive care. No fault of the emergency department. It's just if you don't reach a certain level of sickness, they can't keep you and there's nowhere, there, there's no inpatient unit that will take you. And so you get discharged without a psychiatric, a full psychiatric evaluation necessarily, without treatment, without connection, strong connection to resources. That's what the stabilization center will do for us and for our community is give that opportunity so that individuals come in and they're immediately treated by someone who is trained to treat the condition that they are presenting with.
Move that.
Yes.
Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, please.
Sorry to interrupt you, but it's, I think it's a good segue. You spoke of, well, you spoke of when there is contact with law enforcement and those folks are showing up more frequently, but I'm also interested in what you just said, your secure area. You have plans, I assume, or your plans for people coming in on a POH? Or the ones that are pre-trial, like the old LCPH? And then you have, how's that, you're going to be working with the courts or the, the sheriff's office who holds detainees on, where's that integration? Because you know the capacity at the jail, it's not like it used to be either. They have one housing that's got nine cells for people with significantly mentally ill.
That's right.
So is this going to expand on that or?
So this is, this is a healthcare facility, though we will be accepting law enforcement drop-offs. So if law enforcement encounters someone out in the community and they believe that they have encountered this person primarily because they have a mental health or substance abuse disorder, they will have the option of taking the individual to the stabilization center. And we will have a secure Sallyport there so that they'll go into a locked area. They will make the transition of the individual from law enforcement custody to the stabilization center staff. And then they will drive away. And in other stabilization centers around the country that are operated by our contractor, Connections, this drop-off happens in about five minutes so that law enforcement is back on the road right away and the individuals are getting treatment instead of going to jail. For individuals who need to be charged, they will still be going to jail.
So are you saying that they won't need a POH?
A POH.
Police officer hold.
They, they can have, be on a psychiatric hold at the stabilization center. So if someone meets the criteria for a psychiatric hold, we will be able to do that. But just like any healthcare facility, we will only be able to hold individuals who meet the definition for a hold under the civil commitment rules.
Danger to self for others.
That's correct.
Okay.
But, but I do appreciate where you're going with this counselor because the, this model will reduce the need for hot, for police officer holds is, in theory, right? The, I mean, one, it will, as you're having individuals who are coming in to the stabilization center who may need, may be interfacing with law enforcement multiple different times, the opportunity with the stabilization center that we don't have in our emergency department right now is that there they can stay, they can get, they can get stabilized and then they can get connected to services that are outside of, of, you know, that setting, whether that's housing or connections to, to Lane County Behavioral Health or other services that we really cannot do in an emergency department. So likely that should reduce the number of interfaces.
They're most dangerous to the public.
Yeah.
Ones for POHs, so that's my, that's my biggest concern.
The other great thing about the model that Connections runs and one of the major reasons that we selected them as our provider is that in other communities where they're operating, they're identifying that about sixty percent of individuals who are brought in involuntarily are converting to voluntary care pretty rapidly when they come in. And today, those individuals are either being delivered to the emergency department and refusing care and then being discharged if they don't meet the criteria for a hold or they're going to jail. But this is a very human-centered model. It's a model where you're brought in and immediately a peer greets you. The, in other communities, the peers have the handcuff keys and will actually say, you know, you're released, you're safe here. It's incredibly de-escalating for people.
One second.
Yes.
Hey, thanks. And if you, if you're going to get to this later, please just tell me that. But one of the biggest concerns I see in this type of model is staffing. You know, we have a staffing and issues and recruitment across the nation, especially in the healthcare field. And so you're talking about these people that are going to be needed there to help with that. So how do we face that challenge and, and see that that's staffed appropriately?
That is a huge challenge. And what I would say is that we are, we are starting, well, we've been in task forces, but we're starting more task forces on this. Some great things in our community. We are increasing, have increased access to the training of peers. And in the stabilization center model, peers are a big part of the staffing model. The State of Oregon just approved for QMHAs, Qualified Mental Health Associates, to be trained at community colleges and Lane Community College has agreed to be one of the pilot sites for doing that. So we'll be able to increase the pipeline there. For qualified mental health professionals or the master's level clinicians, Lane County is getting ready to partner with United We Heal, which is an apprenticeship program that is starting a QMHP apprenticeship so that there may be a pathway to become a qualified mental health professional that doesn't involve the master's degree route. And we're looking at possibilities for accelerating pathways there. We are also looking very strongly at psychiatric residency programs. There are a lot of barriers to starting residency programs, but we have some active work happening in our community. Really, Peace Health is a huge leader in that space. So at all levels, we have work that's happening and in nursing, there is work to increase capacity and Representative Nathanson, Alicia and I just came from a meeting with her. She just increased access to provisional licensure for nurses to be able to come in from out of state and start working right away. So there's lots of efforts happening all over the place. We don't have a solid answer to your question, but I didn't want to make it seem like we're sitting on it. Anything, what do you?
Yeah, no, I, thank you so much. It's a really great question.
And also just being able to take care of their mental health.
Right, no.
I mean, because I can imagine the burnout in that profession has got to be significant, so.
We, yes, and I appreciate both of those comments. We, so Peace Health is partnering. We partner with LCC and Bushnell. Really, they, they have been great partners in building our nursing workforce. And we're graduating a hundred nurses a year out of LCC already and looking at an opportunity to expand that. And then again, through partnerships with Bushnell, graduating, I think, a twenty, it's more than that, twenty-four nurses a year and then they're adding and, and really making that more robust there. So I think as Eve alluded, we're on a number of tasks, task force. And with the three-year trajectory for when we open, it really is looking at currently, what is the workforce need down here in Lane County for this? And then what, what do we need to do to, to help grow and develop to be able to be ready to, to open these facilities? And to your point, I really appreciate the sustaining, ensuring that we're retaining individuals and recruiting. So housing is always something that we're looking at and how we recruit into the area. And, and so that's certainly something as we, we look at that, that is one of our barriers that we're, we're considering as well. And then again, workforce, the, the burnout and, and looking at how, how do we help support our, our providers and caregivers, nurses and everybody who provides care to these patients? So thank you for, for raising that.
And just so that everyone has a sense of the scale, these two facilities, we're anticipating will employ between three hundred and four hundred people.
Combined or separately?
Combined, yes.
So how should I think about the stabilization center? So it sounds like, it sounds like it is, it's, it's a county facility, right? Is it more like an urgent care or is it more like an emergency room or is it some combination in between?
It's all of it. So every, every level of care that you would need for behavioral health will be available and for all ages. So we, we at this point do not have a lower age limit for the stabilization center. The state might tell us that we need one, so we are holding that as a possibility. But all ages, all levels of acuity and the goal with a stabilization center, this model, again, other places in the nation, has shown that seventy percent of people who would have needed inpatient care can be stabilized in a stabilization center. And we can keep folks, first, we will keep folks in an observation status. That's for twenty-three hours and fifty-nine minutes. If they can't stabilize within that period of time, we will have beds for adults to go to. Kids will be in beds all the time, whether they're in observation status or whether we're keeping them for a longer period of time. And that's to accommodate the family and the privacy and the support that a family needs because when you're caring for youth, you're caring for their whole family. So we really wanted to be thoughtful about that. So there will be the, the observation unit, there will be sixteen beds in the adult unit for individuals who need to stay longer. Sixteen is because there is a federal rule that says we can't have more than sixteen. It's not just because that is all we necessarily could fill, but having the inpatient unit right there is going to be so important because if we start to get overwhelmed, we'll be able to transfer some folks over to the inpatient side who will be caring for folks at similar levels of acuity. And that synergy, it will be really important. That's one of the really unique things. It was hard for us to figure out how to get these facilities together because we needed eleven acres in the metro area that was close to the acute care hospital and was, and had accessibility within thirty minutes for ninety percent of Lane County residents. Those were our criteria. And so finding eleven acres in the metro area is really hard. But that's, we are so fortunate that, that we're looking at the possibility of co-location here because of how those services will all work together. So any other questions about the services? I have some pictures of stabilization centers. I have some pictures of stabilization centers too that I can walk you through, but would, I'm happy to answer any other service-related questions.
I think we're ready for pictures.
Okay, let's do it. So this is our, our contractor's newest facility. Connections opened the stabilization center in Kirkland, Washington. And it is in a corporate office park. It's a former corporate office for one of the big box stores. I can't recall which one is the big box store, but they still, well, I think it may be a hardware, anyway, I'll, I'll get them here to tell you at some point. But the, the corporate offices, they kept actually a portion of their office space. They leased the rest of it to Connections. And there are multiple businesses that are all operating in the same office park. You'll notice from the outside, you wouldn't know what it was if you didn't know what Connections was. And that is something they take pride in, in all of their facilities. And Alicia can certainly speak to when she toured the Tucson facility, you wouldn't know from the outside what type of facility this was. It's kept very quiet and very welcoming because we want for everyone in the community to feel like they want to feel safe going there. Here is just kind of the aerial mapping view of where that facility is in Kirkland. You can see a Montessori school very, in very close proximity and actually closer than the Montessori school is a daycare that is immediately adjacent to the facility. Again, really, really important to maintain the, the calm around the facility because these facilities are operating in metro areas in very close proximity to schools and daycares and, and other places where you really want to make sure that the environment is safe and welcoming. Here is a picture of the Kirkland entryway. This is the entry into their urgent care facility. So our architecture would likely be pretty similar to this. There's a lot of thought that goes into what, what colors do we use that are therapeutic, that are calming? What does the artwork look like that is therapeutic and calming? So there are, there's tons of attention to detail because the environment that you bring someone into when they're in a behavioral health crisis is hugely important in that initial de-escalation and opening up their, the possibilities for treatment. Here is just a picture of the waiting area and the reception area in, in the urgent care. It's all connected to the remainder of the facility, but for anyone who doesn't require that higher level of care, they'll just stay in the typical waiting room, exam room type areas that you would expect in any urgent care environment. This is the 23-hour observation unit. This unit is secure and you might think, gosh, for people who need a secure setting, it's pretty wide open. And it is, but the cool thing is that they found that folks who are very highly escalated in behavioral health crisis, when they're brought into an environment with other people who are experiencing similar things, it is therapeutic for them to talk and to share stories and to learn about each other's coping mechanisms. There are rooms that they can take people off to if they need quiet time or they need time away. So all of that is built into the structure, but this is how folks spend, the majority of folks who come into the stabilization center and need to stay for longer than an urgent care visit will stay and receive definitive treatment in this unit, this observation unit. So here's an example of, of their calm room. I mean, those blue, that blue wall there, it's a special textile wall that's intended for someone who just needs to ground themselves with texture on a wall. You know, that, again, this is the level of detail that, that they go into thinking about how do we create the most therapeutic environment possible for our community? And they also like to brag about how well they take care of their staff. You know, we will be employing almost 100 people in the stabilization center itself. And, and so we have areas that are separate for staff that have just as much attention to detail put into them in terms of really honoring the incredible work that the staff in these facilities do. Here is another one of the Connections facilities in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Again, another place where you just wouldn't know what, what it is from the outside. And another facility that is very close to parks and schools and is right in the middle of a metropolitan area, as is true for the, the Arizona facilities that Connections operates. So what are our next steps? We've got, we've got work to do all kinds of places. I mean, we've got to get these facilities built. We need some regulatory assistance from the Oregon Health Authority. We're working very closely with them on that. And there are funding conversations that we'll be having. But the really cool thing is that when we came out with an announcement of this partnership, public-private partnership and one of the largest behavioral health campuses in the state, so much energy started to develop around this project to think about how do we get this done and how do we make it sustainable? So we're really also excited about the size of this project has brought so much energy and momentum that we might not have gotten to if we were just trying to do this as a standalone center and that, that's another part of our excitement. So with that, we can entertain any other questions.
Well, you must have covered all, all of our questions. So yeah, it, so when I think about it as a campus, one of the things you keep coming back to is that it's, you know, wherever the provider is, it's located in the, essentially in the middle of everything, right? So is it a closed campus or is it, or is there a lot of just foot traffic around?
There is not, there's foot traffic in that folks will be driving in or they might be walking in from the E M X for urgent care services or, you know, taking a Lyft or an Uber or something. But it is not a facility where people are going to be loitering. And that is really important to us in terms of creating a welcoming environment and also for our staff who are walking out to their cars and making sure that they feel safe because it's a 24-hour facility. It is really, really important that we maintain calm and quiet and that, that folks move on to their next destination, which was one point that I didn't make, is that every person who leaves Connections facilities is connected to, that's why they call it Connections. They is, they're connected to that next level of care. They're provided with transportation also in order to get to their next destination. So, and that is true for the inpatient unit as well. No one is discharged to the street. Everyone has a plan, they have transportation, they get to where that next destination is. So we're not just sending people out the door to find their way.
Yeah, and to add some context to that, we're, we see about 15 patients a day in our Riverbend emergency department that ideally would be better served in a crisis stabilization center. And approximately 50% of those individuals are brought in by mobile crisis or by law enforcement. The remainder are primarily coming in through self-transportation.
So I think you said two interesting pieces to it. So when I think about the broader sort of healthcare environment here, it, when this achieves total build-out, we should think of it as sort of freeing up emergency room capacity. So like some of the concerns that we've heard broadly across our community about emergency room wait times, this in theory would help relieve that.
Yes, this in theory will definitely help relieve that because we will, one, those 15 or even more individuals potentially could be going to the stabilization center for that first encounter and visit. So they won't be coming to the emergency department. And we also will not be boarding youth and adolescents in our emergency department for days or weeks on end. And so that opens up those beds for that throughput as well as adults that are boarding in our emergency department, waiting for that care.
And I think my last question is, when you think about, this is sort of a, a down payment on the work that needs to be done around behavioral health in this, in this community. How far do you think we're off, off the mark? This isn't going to, this is going to solve all our need, but how much of our need? Is it a third? Is it half? Let's get through the first stage and figure out where we're at.
We can answer probably some of that. The, the state just did a study looking at the different types of behavioral health beds that we need available to us. This inpatient facility would fulfill, is it 60 to 70% of the inpatient beds in the county that the state said they needed?
It's complex, but yes, it will, it will serve a, a large portion of that for sure.
And in terms of residential facilities, we're a lot farther behind there. So we will get the 16 secure residential beds. That will put a dent in the need. But the greater need for us is actually in the non-secure residential facilities, particularly substance abuse treatment facilities, and we are very far behind there. It will actually probably be easier for us to come up with transition plans for individuals who come in with just a mental health condition, those who need substance abuse treatment. It is still going to be challenging to find that definitive care if they need a residential facility. It's much easier if all they need is outpatient care.
Well, and I, I would just add, I mean, I appreciate your, your question, Mayor. And it is such a complex question, but I also think as we look at the vision, we don't know what the impacts of the pandemic or yet, right? Especially on our kids that were home during that pandemic and not in school and missing out on those things and then the adults as well. And so as we look at, yes, currently, right now, there's a significant need in this community and in this state for residential beds. But what this provides is immediate access to care, which we do not have, and that ability to get in front of an individual and get them the services they need right in that moment and to take advantage of that moment when they're there in a healing, compassionate and trauma-informed way so that they do get those services and resources and we're not continuing to grow this issue and epidemic instead. So maybe to plant that seed and, and look at it from that way as well.
And then the other pieces of the system that we have been starting, that we have already started, mobile crisis expansion for, for the county, we are serving countywide now, mobile crisis services that meet the state requirements. And it's not 24 hours, our county services quite yet. That is staffing related, so thank you for that question. It's really, really important. But we are expanding that capacity to go to where people are and treat them so that they don't have to come to any facility. Again, getting farther upstream, can we treat people before the biggest crisis of their life hits? That's the goal of mobile crisis. It's the goal of the stabilization center and the urgent care because when people go and they're not treated and they're not treated and they're not treated, that's when we see the crisis happen on the street. And then of course, the deflection program, which has started for individuals who are encountering law enforcement because of their possession of illicit substances. There is now an option to, to divert folks in, it's actually to deflect folks into a system without being arrested. So law enforcement has access to that resource now for, for folks who have primarily a substance abuse challenge and would benefit from immediate access to treatment. So these are, it's all pieces of the puzzle that we're trying to put together to expand our capacity. But you're right, Mayor Van Gordon, none of these things in and of themselves are going to solve the problem. We're in pretty deep after many, many decades of disinvestment in behavioral health.
Victoria.
I am just so grateful that we're having this conversation. That this is something that's finally being discussed and that we're finally looking at the potential for solutions for some of these people. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just really grateful that you're here and that you're telling us about this and that I really appreciate your vision.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Well, when, when we came in, I thought we were going to need 90 minutes, but you guys got us from point A to point B very effectively. Really great to see you come over and just chat about things that are going on and share some more information. I think it's really helpful. The county is a great partner for, of Springfield and obviously Peace Health is somebody that's really important to, to this community as well. So thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
With that, we are adjourned.